Thank you. I'd like to go ahead and bring the Tuesday, May 2, 2017, Warrington Board of Aldermen Meeting into session. If you would, please rise and say, "Pledge of Allegiance."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item would be the consent agenda.
We have the regular meeting minutes from April 18, 2017, executive session minutes from April 18, 2017, and approval to hire Julian Munoz at $14 an hour as a full-time grounds and maintenance worker with a start date of May 8, 2017.
Questions, Collins? All right, I entertain a motion to approve the consent to Jim Adkins.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman John Miller, seconded by Alderman Gary Miller. We'll hold up, please.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shelhartbee?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Motion, Gary, six zero. Next item we're hearing from the public. If you'd like to come say something, we ask that you come forward to the podium, state who you are, state your business, and we will keep you at a five-minute timeframe. All right, not to anybody, we'll move on. Next item, we'll be hearing from the Board of Aldermen. Any comments?
I don't have any.
All right. Move on to Mayor's comments. It's been a week, but I think I'm going to go ahead and skip mine, too, and we'll move on to the appointments for the Board of Committees. Any questions or comments on the appointments? I'll entertain a motion to approve the Mayor's appointments for the Board Committees.
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Shelhartbee, signed by Alderman Schultz. We'll hold up, please.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shelhartbee?
Yes.
Alderman Shelhartbee?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Motion, Gary, six zero. All right, next item is the update on tolling status. Mike, would you like to update us on that?
Yeah.
John, either one.
Well, the latest meeting are still, you know, moving forward. The threat is still out there in spite of what, you know, MoDOT is laying low on it, but to give you an example of what's going on, last week, we had a group of people from the Better Road Forward. They were in Jeff City lobbying, talking to legislators, and Tom Dempsey was there. Of course, our people was talking to the legislators about how wrong it was for I-70 to be picked out as a toll road. Tom Dempsey, who is the lobbyist for Rex Seinkfeld out of Springfield, who has more money than God, probably, but anyway, and he's there trying to talk to the legislators about moving forward with public-private partnerships. And so this is where it's at, and it still looks like there's going to be, there may be something at the last minute, again, a last-minute thing, last-minute amendment tacked on to a bill or something that, hopefully, we have enough senators now that can filibuster against it. One of the main things that's coming out of this group, this group is starting to get high in stature with Jeff City. A lot of the legislators, both from the House and the Senate, are now listening to these people and saying, you know, "Hey, we hear you, and you're bringing some viable alternatives to the table." So moving forward, this group, along with some of these legislators, hope to meet with MoDOT and help MoDOT develop a plan down the road. Right now, there's nothing, there's nothing in the budget to fix the highways that we have, the highways, bridges, whatever. The legislators don't seem to be, they don't want to raise fuel taxes, which, again, we have probably the second lowest in the country. There's eight other states that just recently raised their state fuel taxes because they saw the need that they wasn't going to wait for the federal government to do it, and they saw the need that they were going to have to step up and take care of the infrastructure, especially the roads, highways, bridges, on their own. Michigan, California, North Carolina, Indiana, I think, that's off the top of my head, that's the only ones I can remember, but there were eight of them. So it's just like our legislators are scared to death to even attempt to bring a vote to the people for taxes. So it doesn't look like there's going to be anything happen this year on it, and next year's an election year, so, you know, raising taxes is a dirty word, especially in an election year. So, again, this group is gaining in stature in Jeff City. Some other things that have just come, we now have Callaway County and Audrain County are going to, they're going to have satellite groups that are joining with the Montgomery and Warren County group. We're also Weber Seed Company out of Marshall, I think it is, they want to, they're trying to put together something there. Columbia Chamber of Commerce has finally decided to get on board. So it's moving down the I-70 corridor. We're getting the support. We need to continue. Again, right now, the immediate concern is what happens in this session, right at the end of this session, May 12 or 16, whichever it is. 12? That was, so. Anyway, some of our local businesses now, Certain Teed is, I know you, Warren County Record had an excellent article from Certain Teed. They jumped on board, endorsed the organization, gave money toward it, and they've got a lot at stake. They've got a major expansion they want to do. If the toll road goes through, it probably, it is probably not going to happen. So these local businesses are jumping in, and I would love to see the city get behind and support it. I know we did the billboards. Turned out they're only going to be up about a month to be effective, but we still have that lobbying money available, and I would like to see us move forward and add that to their, because there's still bills to pay. This is a big, this is not an inexpensive proposition that we're going through. And again, like I said, what happens May 12 is not going to be the end of it, probably. They're going to be, you know, continue to want to push against these private or public-private partnerships, especially without the voters having a voice in it. I don't know if you read the, here recently, it opposed Dispatch. I mentioned the name Rex Seinkfeld. He's pushing a public-private partnership to purchase Lambert International Airport. Again, the people are not going to have a say in it, so if they can come in and take that over, they're talking about what has happened in some other places, that everything goes higher, everything from, because your taxi services are going to pay higher to be able to come on the grounds, so their taxi, your taxi rates are going to go up and everything. These are just, there's so many good articles out there on the Internet, if you want to go look at it, look them up. So that, basically, the latest on the, there's two videos on the website, the Better Road Forward website. They've already, just in a short time, they've been there, they've had over 17,000 views, and I think Ethan said they figured that that would probably triple by today, because now that it's on there over the weekend and everything, they expected it to really pick up. So that's, pretty much brings you up to date on where we're at with it, so. You got any questions? I'll try to answer them, but I don't always have the right answers, so.
I guess, kind of rolling into the next issue on the agenda, we'll combine the two. How much are you guys looking, or how much are you looking to ask for, for additional?
Well, originally, when we talked, this was a few months ago, we talked about doing, I think we have $5,500 in the lobbying fund, and we talked about doing that in conjunction with doing the billboards. We went ahead with the billboards. It took a little longer because, again, the issue became, are we allowed, or we wanted to control the message. Ethan sent a letter, or an email, to Terry on what the new, because there are now, there's two separate, I know we had to watch, because the one LLC has now filed an initiative with the state. That's something that we cannot be a part of.
Because it's going for a voting issue?
Yeah, because it's talking about a voter-approved issue. The other one is a 501(c)(3) or (4), you remember, Chris, which?
I think it's a (c)(4) because they're politically active, but they're still a nonprofit, because one can't be involved in any political lobbying, the other one can't. I think it's a (c)(4), if I'm correct.
Okay. And I, Chris has been involved with it and talking to the attorney from Barclage, and I've been asking for answers on it, because people have been asking me for it. The one letter I got today, and this is, and I don't know who they're, Lathrop Engage?
So, yeah, and if I can jump in here, I can give a little bit of background about the, our sign out on the interstate that escapes me from what it is. So initially, when we got in, when we, I had the discussion with Ethan Todd, and I just want to say, you know, he has been fantastic to work with, extremely responsive, extremely professional, really a smart kid, and really, you know, I brought some of my concerns about the message, and this was in, we really, they came to us really in the infancy of this, you know, this project, to really try to fight it, and Lathrop Engage is from Kurt Schaefer, who is the, he was the Republican candidate for, in the primary for Attorney General that lost to Josh Hawley, and so Ethan coordinated a telephone call, because I said, "Look, you guys have put out material that says you're going to go for a ballot initiative," and Kurt Schaefer was like, "I agree with you 100 percent, Chris. We either need to do a separate, you know, a separate 501(c)(4) company that's not pushing a ballot initiative, or why don't you guys use the city's website?" And that's how we got the billboard, which I, driving out here, I saw today, and it looks fantastic, and the information's on our website. Ethan was really good and really helpful in getting that done, and so was Kurt. So they really have a great team, and I mean, obviously, you know, people in Jeff City that are well-connected. And then that specific letter that, or email that came from Lathrop Engage was whether or not there was a public's purpose served by giving money to fight toll roads, and clearly there was a public purpose. I never thought it was an issue of public purpose. The only thing I've always, I've said, and I've always maintained with the city, is when you give money to an outside agency like Greater Warren County Economic Development Council, you guys have had some agreement that sets forth the parameters. So if somebody comes back and says, "It's not for a public purpose," like Agape or Greater Warren County Economic Development Council, we can point back to an agreement and say, "Hey, look, this spells out what they're supposed to be doing. Here's the requirements of what they're supposed to be doing." So I don't think it's an issue with public purpose. They have set up a separate entity, and I think probably some of the feedback that Kurt and I discussed, and that was actually his idea at the time, was, you know, Chris, I agree with you, we really need a separate entity, and I think that's where they came up with the separate entity. And then we've also done the option of what we've done with the billboard, which really was really great to work with both Kurt and Ethan on it. So I think public purpose is fine. The question then becomes if we give money to this new 501(c)(4), because I think they're both nonprofits. I think they're both nonprofits. I don't think one's an LLC. Maybe it is, but I don't think it is. I think they're both nonprofit corporations. It goes back to what I originally said. Do you do it through a, some type of agreement where you're hiring them for services to fight the toll roads? And one of the things I suggested originally to Terry, and I suggest, again, Ethan's a bright kid. I think the city could hire him, I don't know, $5,500, how far would they get for lobbyist efforts, but I think you could hire him to fight toll roads to help maybe defer some of the costs that the group is putting in there. So I think there's options there, but I will tell you, I still stick by what I originally said, that I think it's in the city's best interest with whatever you decide to do, to have some type of service agreement if you give money to the one group and say, "Hey, this is what you're going to do for our money," or to see if it's helpful to them to say, "Why don't we have a contract directly with Ethan to contribute to some of the lobbying efforts to maybe help defray the cost?" But I don't know where the majority of their cost is and what they're doing.
So have you talked to that kid, and is that kid going to be able to come up with a?
Did I refer to Ethan as a kid?
About five times.
Well, he is a kid. I don't mean that, I don't think he'd get insulted if I said that. Well, he's a sharp, he's a sharp, he's a sharp young man. Is that better, Mayor? He's a sharp young man. I really liked working with him.
Well, you know, and...
I apologize, Ethan.
For sure, at my age, he is a kid, so I...
I feel like he's a kid to me.
But, no, so, and the thing is, I guess the reason I'm pushing for something on is, Warrington is the, we're the largest city involved in this thing right now, just in the surrounding Montgomery and Warren County, and I feel like we should, we've got a really big investment, 15 to the tune of $15 million, that could be impacted by what happens with toll road. And I feel like Warrington should be taking the lead on this issue, along with some of the other municipalities. So, and that's one, that's one of the reasons I've been passionate about it, because, like I say, it's definitely, the threat is still there.
There again, though, what's the amount we're looking at, just so I can write that down, to understand.
I was thinking $5,500, Terry. I don't know if you remember.
Actually, the number was $5,000. That was in last year's, in this current year's budget for tolling effort.
It's how much?
$5,000.
$5,000, okay.
And I don't know if you choose to take what we've already spent for billboards out of that, or if you want to consider that separately, but $5,000 was the budget number.
Well, we wanted to take, we wanted that separate. Our original conversations, if I remember right, John, I know you, Garrett, do you remember?
I thought it was separate. But 5,500, whether it's 5,500 or $5,000, I don't remember that, but I, but two separate issues, billboards was one issue, and then the, as far as a monoterial donation, we were unclear on, and Chris was doing his due diligence, so I'm trying to figure out how we could do it and make it all legal, and with the email that, I got the same email that you got, Chris, and again, I'm not the attorney, but it looks like we can do it.
Well, public purpose was never my question. I always thought toll roads were public purpose, and that memo addresses public purpose. That may have been someone else's concern, but that was not my concern or concern I articulated. My concern, as Mike said, was controlling the message and not hampering them in their lobbying effort to get a ballot measure, which is ultimately what they went for, and not putting the city in a position where they're spending money on a ballot issue, which we can't do by Missouri law.
Well, we're really lucky to have this group working. Obviously, Warrington has got a lot of risk here, as soon as everybody else along Highway 70. But this group has really taken the lead, and they've really, like Mike's pointed out, they are really getting some traction, and people are starting to take notice, and that's really what it's all about, as when, no one wants toll roads, but people didn't realize that we were that close, we are this close to maybe having toll roads and not having a choice. This group is making everyone aware, that's where the, so the motor is running. We're fortunate that this group is local and got all this stirred up around, got all the commotion on Interstate 70 with all these other communities now joining in. Sure, we've got a big, we've got a lot at risk with our, learning interchange and so on and so forth, but so does everyone else. My only concern was not how much to give them, it was on how to give them. And I, so if it's, and I'm fine with the $5,000 or 5,500, I'm not disputing any of that, it's, or whatever the amount is. If we're comfortable with on how we can do it, that was my only concern.
Well, I'm kind of a little bit where you are, John. I can't see supporting a motion to give money on this project until we have something better defined in black and white that we can see and the attorney can see. I mean, when we do deals with Agape, it's a purchase of service. When we do deals with the Senior Center, it's a purchase of service. Well, if this is going to be a purchase of service, there's a requirement of the group to identify who they are, to give a certain documentation, to enter an agreement, and we've talked about this repeatedly, but we have yet to be forthcoming on what exactly that is. There almost seems to be this level of confusion in our discussions, or uncertainty in the discussions. So if the intent is, at the next meeting or a following meeting, to make a motion to give some dollar amount, I would think they should comply with the same thing we request all these other organizations to do, and that's to have a defined contract where it talks about what are we doing, what are we doing for this money, what are they doing for us? And once that's there on the table, and I think you can consider, is that worth doing? Is that worth making a motion? But at this point in time, there seems to be a lot of confusion as to what's there. I mean, you referred to a letter that you got. Well, I ain't getting letters, Gary, I assume you're getting any letters. So I think we need to, they need to put something together where they can come in with a contract and say, "We would like for you to support what we're doing. Here's the contract, here's what we're going to do for you." And then, then I think it's probably a pretty easy question to make a motion and approve it, but until then, I don't know. I mean, I went up to their website as we were talking here, and if you pull up the Better Road Forward, the website I have is surely taking political positions on issues that I don't know that we're supposed to be doing. I don't know, I mean, you know, so if the average person, the public, does that, they're going to, well, Warrington's supporting, our tax money's supporting this issue in this way. So I think if we can defend that by saying, "No, this is who the agreement is, this is what we're purchasing for our money," then I think we have a position as Alderman where we can sit there and say, you know, "We approved this, and here's why, and this is what it is," and somebody can see in black and white. So I'd like to see that before we make a motion for a dollar amount.
Well, with that, with that all being said, again, same, same thing with the, the same discussion we have with the billboards, I don't want it to just keep kicking the can down the road. We all, I thought we all agreed that we do need to get behind this group and support. Now, I have been, I am totally confused, because I, for all these time, for these last two or three months, I have been, at least in my mind, was under the understanding that we were researching on how to donate the money. Now, if we haven't made any progress on that, and we just keep kicking the can down the road, I'm really getting confused.
Well, I've never said, that memorandum talks about public purpose. I have never, you could go back and watch the videos, I've never said it's not a public purpose. That's what that memorandum addresses, is whether or not, I've said very clearly initially that we can do this, except for my concern was they were supporting a ballot measure. When I discussed that with Kurt Schaefer, their attorney, about a month back, they created this other group, and that's where they came up with the other group. I really, I really would be surprised that Ethan or the group would have any problem with the service agreement, putting something together.
Then why haven't they done that? Because you keep referring to them as "they," and "they" is "who."
Well, we spent a lot of time getting the billboard issue taken care of, because the billboard issue was, I said, "Here's my concern," and they said, "Well, we got to figure out the solution."
I understand.
So there was some back and forth. So the donation, we never even talked about the donation, because they wanted to get the billboard up soon as possible. So if it was me for not bringing it up to them, that would be my fault, but we never had a discussion about putting a service agreement together.
Well, I think that's what needs to happen. I think that would go a long way, so we don't know if "they's" this corp, that corp, this LLC, that, we don't know what organization we're dealing with, because we don't have a formal proposal sitting in front of us to do that. That's all I'm asking is, and I, you know, I have a little problem with the use of the word "making a donation." We're purchasing a service.
Right.
We don't make a donation to Agape, we don't make a donation to Senior Center. We purchase services from them to better the community, and this certainly is something that better's the community. I don't think anybody's going to argue that, but we need to have somebody come to the table with a piece of paper and say, "This is the service agreement, this is who they are," and then we can vote up and down on what do we want to, what do we want to give them. And I think we need to do that. It sounds like to me there's not a lot that we can do effectively on this immediate issue with the budget coming up on the 12th that's going to have an impact. But the impact of the service agreement may apply, is a future effort as we go down the road, to talk about changing the direction of where we need to go on the highway, and that, whether it's a ballot proposal or whether it's something else, you know. So I think that's what, all I'm asking for is, bring me a piece of paper that says, "This is who they are, this is what we're going to get for our money, and I can support it wholeheartedly."
Yeah, I would be really surprised that they would have an issue with that, because everything we've brought up, they've listened to my concerns, and I think, to your point, Alderman Ock, they are very closely designated 501(c)(4) corporation, so I do think it probably makes sense to have it as a written service agreement, but like I said, I've never had the conversation with Ethan, who's a representative from Barclage's lobbying group, that, "Hey, if we're going to do money, we need to have a service agreement," so...
So let me cut to the chase here, because we're getting very long this discussion, and I don't mind it to an extent, except for we do have some other things on the agenda. Do we need a service agreement if we're going to donate money? Yes or no?
I think it's the best policy to have, because that's how we deal with all other agencies, so. And I think it's pretty simple.
So can you get on the phone with Ethan or whoever you deal with and say, "The city council would like to get a service agreement ASAP, so they can make a motion so we can get you money?"
Absolutely.
Sounds good.
I mean, I understand. I also think we need clarification. Terry, can you have somebody pull up the minutes or look back on the budget to see if it was two separate or if it was one $5,000? Because if it isn't, then we're going to have to find $5,000 somewhere else if we agree to donate. We're going to have to find it somewhere else in the budget. And I'm not trying to argue with you guys. I just, the way I remember it was $5,000 set aside for billboards or for donations. I don't remember two separate. So I just, I just want to make sure we get clarification on this, please.
Two separate, because of the tollers, the billboard comes out of $5,000. I think we've left it at that.
Yeah, I thought, I thought it was the billboards that we were paying for, and that was our donation.
Mayor, I have a question.
Sure.
This is for Chris.
Yes, sir.
How long a timeframe would it take to come up with this so-called document we're talking about?
I'm going to email Ethan as we speak and say, "We need to do a service agreement," and I can't imagine it will take very long to come up with something. I'm sure Ethan's going to want to take the first turn at it, because it's going to, they have to give us some of the identifying characteristics, but I can't imagine, as long as we get it turned around, that we can't have it possibly for the next board meeting. It's not going to take very long. Most of our service agreements are two pages at maximum length.
So you're, you will do the language, I would assume, on how we want it to read.
Right. What I would probably suggest is Ethan submit something to us, to me, and then I'll revise it, and we'll go back and forth to come up with language to be, and just to, as Alderman Ock said, identify who they are to distinguish themselves from the lobbying 501(c)(4), I think is very important.
Because I don't know if "they" is Ethan?
Correct.
Or "they" is Barclay?
Right. Right.
Or "they" as the group Wayne Baker's heading up, and doing a great job on it. I'm giving credit. So there's three days, and I don't know who we're really talking about funding at this point in time.
But I think, to your question, Alderman Miller, I think, you know, we can get it done quickly.
It could be resolved at our next schedule meeting.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, I don't think it's going to take a lot of work to put something together and clarify that stuff.
All right. Is everybody agreeing to that, that we'll go ahead and get a service agreement before we...
Service agreement or vote up for next month?
Next meeting, not next month.
Yeah, next meeting. Let me clarify that, next meeting. I'm sorry.
All right. So we're going to go ahead and table the motion for the approval of additional funding to the next meeting, please. And that'll be upon a service agreement that can be conducted between the lobbyist and our attorney.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Now, now to the discussion topic of public transportation.
Well, the purpose of having this on here is to further clarify the discussion that we've had at the planning meeting in January. Before, at that point, we talked about being interested in looking at options to improve the safety on North 47 with people that don't have sidewalks and walk in the streets. As we came back and started talking about it at the department head level, there were more questions than answers that arose. So before we can really do the research and try to bring up a proposal to you, we need to know more of what your intent is. For example, are we only going to offer public transportation to people who live on North 47 and need to travel to the southern downtown area? What about the people who live on South 47 and need to travel up north to the downtown or midtown area? Are we going to limit the options as far as where people can be dropped off? Are you going to limit the options as to, is it open to absolutely everyone? Or is it going to require some distinction of people that don't have other modes of travel? There's a myriad of different things that need to be considered before we can accurately put together any kind of plan or proposal for you.
I think what we were talking about was the inability to put sidewalks and therefore look for public transportation options for people between areas of no sidewalk capabilities to areas with sidewalk capabilities. So if I have it right, we have sidewalks all the way south to the end of the city limits south, right? Because we go out to Dry Fort Crossing. So I mean, that's pretty much where that is. So if there's sidewalk capabilities, I don't see where we need, if there's a way to get around without being on 47, that there's a need for public transportation. But I think what we were talking about is how do we get people from the north into the city limits where there are sidewalks and capabilities to access the city.
Yeah, I agree. Because I think I brought up the idea when we were trying to brainstorm the issue of how does the city effectively widen 47? Because, you know, we don't have any guidance from MoDOT. If the city does it at their own dime, it should be on the west side, it should be on the east side of 47. How wide is the road going to be? Are the sidewalks going to be destroyed and replaced? So I think the objective was to deal with one specific problem as opposed to, this isn't a conversation about doing public wide transportation around the city. That's a different question. I think it was just, how do we focus on safety issues on North 47 where there is no option other than running in the road? So I think we need to talk about, we need to narrow that down to a degree. That's the specific thing we're trying to resolve right now. It's not general transportation so you can call up somebody from your house and get a ride downtown or wherever you want to go. That's not the intent. The intent is to improve safety until we get to the point where North 47 gets widened and there's sidewalks there so people have an option.
So it would be limited to someone traveling from the northern boundary of the city to basically Walmart?
Yeah.
Because that's where sidewalks start. So it wouldn't go any further than that north. It wouldn't go any further than that south, but it would travel in that area.
Right. There's sidewalk capabilities and crossing capabilities.
That's the way I understood it also. Because the most unsafe part, when we were brainstorming work session called whatever, that the most dangerous section is that particular section. And it is dangerous.
With the exception of our wonderful area out here on Highway U.
We're going to talk about that tonight.
Okay.
So, do we do an application process to rate what the need is for the people that are up there?
So it would be open to anyone living in that area?
Or do we do an application process that shows the need on the individual and then approve or have a committee or have a person?
I don't think you can do that.
Can we do a survey? Is there a way to do a survey in need that's specifically targeted to homeowners out there saying, the city's considering an alternative to walking on 47? Is this a service that you would consider using or you see has value to you? Because a lot of complaints really are coming not so much from the walkers. They're coming from the drivers who are scared to death they're going to kill somebody.
Yes.
You know, so I think we have to try to identify who the target market is. And if we do this and everybody is walking says, no, I'm not going to use it. I'd rather just walk, then it's not going to be, so somehow, I don't know how we can do a survey that isolated?
Well, we can, through our utility billing system, identify neighborhoods.
Right.
And so theoretically, we would be able to target those neighborhoods that are in that area and send a survey out to them.
And then I guess the other question would be, if we send the survey and define it, this is talking about going from your neighborhood to Walmart where, to Walmart area where sidewalks start. Would you use a service? What would be optimal times to use service? Because I can't envision it being pick up the phone and call the city's running bus out there. I would think you'd more likely schedule specific times when you were going to run, you know...
To and from, or which?
To and from. And then the question become is, you know, is there a service provider who would do that? I mean, could you subcontract something like this to an oats-type company that's running buses anyway? So they would have, so we don't have to figure out how the man or woman the situation, and we don't have to figure out purchasing vehicles, but we can identify a service need, and then we can see if somebody's interested in providing that service and see what it's going to cost us to try to figure it out. That's all I approach.
And we wouldn't pick up the liability of it either.
Well, that's true, too.
Mm-hmm.
Insurance, that's the insurance.
It's more than that. It's the interest.
Yeah. So that's how I think I'd approach it. I mean, has that narrowed it down enough for staff?
Yes. At least we know where to start.
Okay.
Very good.
Anybody else? Anybody else to get that? Want to begin with that?
Yeah. There's a taxi service, at least a taxi parked on Oak Street in front of a house. I don't know whether that's local or if that's...
Yeah. And you know, and I think the other side of it, I'm guessing a lot of these people who are walking can't afford transportation. So the question is, could they afford a taxi either? Because they're walking because they have no alternative. So it's really a service to kind of a targeted group of population. Now, everybody can take advantage of this up there. You don't have to drive your car down. But it's really targeted at people who probably don't have the resources, you know. And so then we'd have to figure out, is there some kind of fee we want to associate with that? Or how exactly we do that? But that's just my guess.
My thought was maybe contract with a taxi company to provide that service and work out some type of an agreement.
Yeah, that would be an option, using a company like an oats situation or a private carrier. That would be an option if they're interested in bidding on that and do it.
Okay.
So at least we got to start.
We've got to start.
Anything else? Anybody like to add?
No.
All right. Before we move on, Terry, give me one second.
Okay. Did you forget my popcorn? You forgot my popcorn.
No, I only did one name.
One?
What's this for?
Leaf blower.
Leaf blower. You tell them what we're drawing for first, what the point of this is. So Arthur Holzer.
For Earth Day.
Earth Day.
Right, or the cleanup.
Recycling.
The recycle day. This is the prizes for the recycling.
That's a leaf blower.
He works part-time for his city. Is he eligible? Does he work for his city?
Arthur?
Not Arthur.
Walter used to.
Oh, Art Holzer. That's the other Holzer. You're on my right. Hit the Jews.
I don't...
This is for Weed Eater.
Darryl Winter.
Darryl Winter or Venter?
I'm not sure which one it is. Looks like a V.
So folks, these people came up, participated in our citywide cleanup, and were entered into the chance to win, and...
That one was what?
Those are our two winners.
Weed eater. Oh, Weed Eater.
Anybody want to tell us about the citywide cleanup?
I know. They're not really here, but success?
It was a success. We actually had 109 participants that registered for that.
Wow.
And we had several that didn't register. They just wanted to drop off their stuff. So I think it was really successful. We had built a semi-trailer full of scrap metal. And I don't remember the exact number of tires, but we had picked up load probably about four or five times. And then we got rid of a lot of televisions. We had many pallets of televisions that we got rid of.
Televisions that used to be really cool.
Yeah.
And really happy. Did we take those to EDC or?
Yes.
Mayor, kudos to the employees that were there. I was there all morning, and I want to tell you, it was flat cold.
It was cold. That was a nasty day.
Never once did I hear anybody complain.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Good job.
I think also we need to thank, I think it's the group from the Marines that always help us with...
The Army.
The Army. Uh-oh, sorry. Sorry, guys. But this is what, their third year volunteering to do this?
I believe so.
Yeah. So they're always very friendly and cheerful to come and lift the heavy weights.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Go on, move on to the Director of Operations, Finance Officer Terry Thorpe.
My first item for you this evening is the annual question about whether or not the city wishes to participate in the sales tax holiday, which is the first weekend in August. If we do not want to participate, then we have to notify the state. If we want to continue to participate, then we do not need to take any action.
You know what the impact of that is, Lois? You know, the quote?
It is almost impossible to try to figure that out. Because of the timing of the way sales tax payments go in from different businesses, there's really no good way.
And whether those people just go someplace else to buy it and...
Yeah, I understand. I was just kind of curious.
Yeah, it's really not.
Because they saw this come up. I spoke with some members of the school board and the staff down at the headquarters, whatever they call it, for the school. And we have some of the largest graduating classes going through our schools currently. Numbers that they say haven't been matched by any other graduating classes. So we have a tremendous number of kids that'll be going through. So to help parents out, maybe, I would say I'm encouraging it, but...
This only applies to certain items.
Yes.
Certain items and certain days. Probably the first weekend in August, is it?
Right.
Going back to school.
Yeah. I'd recommend that we keep doing it.
I agree. Me as well. I agree.
Anybody have a thought here? Sounds like we're in a unanimous decision.
Okay, great. My next item for you is dealing with sidewalks on Highway U, Alderman Miller.
Okay.
At the planning meeting in January, you all expressed a desire to find a way to put sidewalks on Highway U. And so I'm pleased to tell you that we have Jeff Keven here this evening. The Keven family owns several parcels of land that are adjacent to Highway U from MM down to where the 911 center is. We've spoken with the Kevens, and they have agreed to donate to the city the easements that would be necessary to connect the sidewalk all the way from MM down to the sidewalk that exists currently in front of 911. In exchange for that, they've asked for the city to vacate the street, Celia from Highway U over to Pinkney, and Pinkney from Celia down to Highway U. Those areas would then allow them to be able to combine their properties there, making it a viable ability to develop. But it would give us then the ability to have connecting sidewalks around that curve on Highway U, which is extremely dangerous when the people are walking in the street with strollers and such.
So you can't read the names of the streets on the map here, but where your arrow is, can you kind of highlight where Pinkney is?
This is Celia.
Celia.
This is Pinkney.
That's Pinkney.
This is Celia.
The L shape right there around the 2.001 parcel?
Yes.
So what does that mean to vacate the street? Because there are existing streets, right? So what does that mean?
To close those streets and turn that street easement over to the Kevens.
So by that two, three parcels.
Yeah. Because there's a bridge right here.
Yeah, I understand that.
So this from here on down would close.
Oh, so just this little stretch here?
Well, it'd be...
Two stretches.
This piece right here and this piece right here.
Yeah, I don't know what that means. Because you have to like draw a straight line.
Hang on a second. Jeff, can you show us your parcels?
Yeah, show us on the board.
Yeah, Jeff Keven. And anyway, okay, here is, all right, here's, is this Celia right here?
Yes.
Okay. This is the one, we got a piece of land here and a piece of land here. And by vacating this, we can put this together. And then this would be...
No, down further.
Okay.
Seal you down, and then if you go down further.
This piece right here, this Pinkney.
Okay, right here, I'm sorry. And it goes, this goes all the way down to U. And I guess there's like a little creek. It's kind of dangerous actually pulling in here. And the sidewalks, I guess, in right here. But is what, then we have the land over here. So this would be one continuous piece altogether. Okay, still leaving access from MM here to the subdivision, which is, you know, doubling, and it's right now it's a best back.
Yeah, because there's a house on that last 22 in the corner there.
Yes.
So this isn't fully developed, this area back there? There's a few homes, I know back.
Yeah.
They're up there on the top, though.
Oh, yeah. These have all been tore down. It used to be old sheds here, and then even here was old house and shed been tore down. So it's just all raw land at this time.
So you just want to combine that triangle?
Yes. Instead of, yeah, put it all together, have a larger piece where you could put a bigger building and, you know, instead of having it chopped up. You know, for the future, there's no uses at this point, but, you know.
So just to be clear, it will leave from MM down to the corner where it says 22, just like, it's cut off, but it's like, they'll go up from MM to the top, go up to the top.
Right. Okay, yeah. This would all stay, yes.
All the way down to that corner right there.
Then they can still, you know, go back to their subdivision. The only thing would be vacated would be this strip here and then this strip here.
The only question, it makes sense. The only question I have, if you have an emergency service vehicle like a fire truck, and now I would think it'd be easy to come off of U and just go straight into that subdivision. But they'd have to come down. Can they make the turn? I don't know how big of an intersection that is.
It's a pretty good size.
Is it, so a fire truck, you think you'd tell them?
The only reason I'd say that is...
Yeah, it would actually probably be just as quick. Because this is really hard to turn in here, and this is really, well, it's real hard to turn in.
That road's very narrow.
Yes. Right here, because I tried to turn, I actually had to back up and pull in and back and forth.
So from an easement standpoint, I'm sorry, Scott.
Currently, is there only two houses down that road, plus the one on the corner right there, and then those two right there?
Yeah, you know, I believe, there's like two or three homes, I think. The rest are just vacant lots, you know.
Who's got the red light?
Me.
Oh, could you go?
I believe this would only affect those two houses and the one on the corner, and they would just have to exit the other way.
Yes. Instead of, you know, if they were going this way, they'd just have to go around and, you know, which is just, you know, top stick and jump.
So from an easement standpoint, here on the 3.79 acres, I mean, I think you're going to have to cut in a chunk on that to get that sidewalk in there with the way the hill is?
Well, their intent from speaking with Mr. Keven is they want to grade all of their land down to a level where they don't have those huge cliffs. Is that correct, Joe?
Yeah, that's correct, Terry. Because right now, you got, this sets up maybe seven, eight feet. And our plan's eventually just grade all this flat where it's, you know, better-looking piece of land, too. Right now, you know, you can't even see it. I mean, this land's kind of high. This is kind of low, so we can push it all down there. land's kind of high. This is kind of low, so we can push it all down there, leveling all this, you know, nice and flat.
I'm worried about the 379, though.
379.
The big corner.
The big piece that's down the bottom.
That piece right there.
Oh, well, this is part of our land also.
Yeah.
But what are you going to grade down there? That's the question.
Really, wouldn't be doing any grading at this point.
Because what I'm concerned about is, because that's where our sidewalk needs to be.
Oh, well.
So how far will the easement be able to?
Okay. I guess now where your sidewalk's kind of in.
It's up, up a little bit, yeah.
Right there.
Right there.
Yeah. So, you know, I talked to my dad. He was going to give you an easement. I guess you're continuing sidewalks from here and, you know, this way.
Because I think it's going to require some grading of that property down in order to put.
Yes.
That's my point. It's not just like we need six feet.
Right. Because it does. It sets up on a, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, but you'd only take a six-foot easement. But you'd have permission to go on to do whatever you need to do on the property.
Ten foot is what Mr. Keaven has agreed to.
Okay.
Ten foot along there. So we would have to have a working easement to bring it down to where it needed to be while the construction was being done.
That was my question.
But it would fit within 10 foot from the edge of the MODOC right of way, which is actually going to be further back than just the edge of the road.
So it is a 10-foot wide easement, right?
It is 10-foot wide. That's what he's agreed to.
Letter agreed to a 10-inch.
Oh.
Wide easement.
Yeah, no, 10 foot is what we talked about.
That's for all the skinny people on the highway.
That's the white line now.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Small cars only. Any other questions, comments down here? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the request to vacate portions of Pinkney and Celia Street. We have to have the attorney draw up an ordinance to vacate those streets, right?
Yeah, you all need to vote to approve it. And then we will do, because we're going to have to have a survey and get legal descriptions. But there needs to be a vote to do that before we expend the funds to get that done.
So moved.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Alderman Schultz. Will call vote, please.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alder Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Motion K60. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Any other small updates?
Nope.
All right. Next, we'll hear from Public Works Director, Guy Jeters.
First time I have is, we need to rescind on the vote that we had April 18, 2017 with the Board of Alton meeting regarding the change order for number two. It was voted no. There's no that funding in this. So we need to have a change order signed today.
Anybody follow along with that?
Yeah, much to my disgust. Wasn't happy about that.
Is there any questions on why we need to rescind it?
There's none. I read the statute.
Okay.
Oh.
Well, then I will, I will entertain a motion to approve, to rescind the vote from April 18, 2017.
Well, actually, Mayor, what I would recommend under Robert Schules' order, since it's the meeting after the meeting in which the vote occurred, it should be a motion to reconsider the vote made by someone who's on the prevailing party. Once that's voted, then it automatically brings the issue up. Because if you rescind it, then it has to be on the agenda again. But if you reconsider it, then you can just automatically go and re-vote and change the vote. So it should be a motion reconsider, not motion rescind. They're really similar. One is for when things occur far after the meeting after. But since we're in the meeting after, it should be a motion reconsider.
Did you read that, Scott?
So whatever he said, I.
A motion to reconsider the vote.
Entertained a motion to approve, to reconsider the vote from April 18, 2017, Board of, Board of Alton meeting approving the change order number two for the Hickory Lake Project. Would that be fine?
Correct, yes.
I'm not going to say that again, so.
I will make a motion that we reconsider the vote.
I'll second that.
A motion made by Alderman Schultz, seconded by Alderman John Miller. Will call vote.
Alder Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Motion K60. Now can I approve the change or do I need to?
Now it's reopened, so you can make a motion to approve the change order, which was the prior motion.
I will entertain a motion to approve the change order number two for the Hickory Lake Project, Hickory Lake Road Improvement Project.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman John Miller, seconded by Alderman Gary Miller. Will call vote.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alder Person Castily?
Yes.
Motion K60.
The road's open too.
Nice.
So we got the approach going to the complex. And we're waiting for concrete breaks. We should head in Thursday. And it should be ready to go for this weekend.
Excellent. Thank you.
Perfect.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
I'm shocked. Thank you.
So you're saying the road from Hickory Lake to the complex will be open?
Open. The only thing that's closed right now is one lane going to the subdivision to the left and then going to the road to the complex is closed. You can still go up and go to the parking lot and get in. But Thursday, it should be. We should get a break back.
So now it's open. Are we going to have a little extra patrol out there, Lieutenant Ollie?
Sure.
Because you could do about 90 on that road. It is smooth. Some of the residents have asked that we were going to raise the speed limit on that road. What is it, 20 now? It's 20, but I don't, I don't know logistics behind it. Who's, who do Germans at?
I wish it was a recommendation from the police department.
I was just out there and it actually is 15 past the trailer park.
They slowed them up for construction because they're still working on digits.
So it's just a temporary 15?
It's a temporary sign.
I think typically what we do, Mayor, is have the police make a recommendation. You know, go out and assess what's going on and make a recommendation as to what the speed, I think the speed limit should be. Do you mind doing that, Lieutenant?
Sure.
Work with, I guess, whoever you need to work with, with Guy or what be it, and see if you can.
See how fast you can go without feeling unsafe.
Take it easy on them soccer moms. We don't want a lot of tickets on them soccer moms.
Take a minivan from the water department.
What's Pinkney Road feeling?
20.
20. It's 20. It's painful.
It is 20. Because that's the other road you get a lot of people coming to. Because they're kind of similar in a little bit in terms of you've got open fields on one side and it's 20 miles per hour down there too. And we've had numerous requests to increase that. We never have. And I think one of the reasons why we got parking on there, I see tons of people that can't, actually, they've got to slow down to be able to get past. But I agree, on some open days, it's, it's hard to maintain 20 on that road as well. We'll take one road at a time, though. Thank you, Guy.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Finance Manager, Gary Alturi.
The first item I have is the accounts payable for the month in the amount of $302,350.50.
Any questions, Travis? The only question I have is, we're making a payment to the pool company for '17. Is that a carryover from end of the pool season? Or is that anticipating the start? As long as a fee and long as a reimbursement for wages?
It looked like it was a management fee that normally has to be paid prior to the pool opening.
Okay, so it's a prepaid. Okay. That's because, you know, the premium pool thing and, you know, at first with April, it's like, oh, wait a minute, we've been closed for quite a while. So that's kind of a pre-fee. Okay. Any questions, Travis?
Someone asked me if the current pool was going to be open the regular session that it opened.
I believe, yes.
Okay.
This is the last year.
Yes. Hopefully the last. All right. Any other questions, comments? I will entertain a motion to approve the accounts payable in the amount of $302,350.50.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Alder Person Castily, seconded by Alderman Ock. Will call vote.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alder Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes. Motion K60.
The next item I have is the financial report for the month of March. It includes the sales tax. We had talked about that last month. So this month, the restricted is $102,489. It was listed on the spreadsheet.
So let me ask you. So the sales tax we're getting in that's restricted is 1%. Correct?
Yes.
So when is this issue of the sales tax going directly to the, you know, Sheriff's Department of Iowa and then they have to reimburse us for what comes in? When does that come into effect? Only when, because right now the outlet center's starting to, you know, the furniture store in there, he's starting to generate additional sales tax. Does that get split? Or how does that show up?
Terry?
Are you a clue?
Well, it's only the TIF revenue that is affected. So as I understand it, there would be funds coming in right now.
Right.
That would be going to the county that need to be coming back.
And so how do we monitor that? Or how do we know that? Because you have a column now for 1% going to interchange, but the TIF amount, how do you know, you get a check, what's the TIF and what's the 1%?
What's the TIF and what's the 1%?
In other words, the additional revenue generated out of the TIF from the sales, like at the furniture store.
Mm-hmm.
For the TIF district.
Right, for the TIF district. That needs to be segregated out from the 1%.
Correct.
And we have to know, does the state tell us, well, the county got X number of dollars and they have to reimburse us half? How do we, how is that controlled, you know?
We will have to get a report, because we don't get anything from the state that tells us what goes to the county.
Okay.
So we will have to get a report from the county that tells us how those monies need to be segregated. That's the only way we have to know.
Each, each service provider who is part of the agreement has to then tell us.
Correct.
Is it like a honor system?
Oh, no. There will be reporting formats that'll be established.
Okay.
To stay on top of that. We'll have to, because we're going to have to then account to the developer.
Right.
For those funds that are supposed to be going into the TIF to repay that. So.
He's got, he's got an interest in that.
Absolutely. So there's going to have to be a very definitive accounting structure to keep track of those funds.
So the other, the final part, of course, you have to, we have to know what funds come into us, too.
Exactly.
So it's not, it's just not the county splitting, it's us splitting, it's our district. All these entities are just, so when you have that extra 60-some thousand on your report, we don't know if part of that might be the TIF money? Or you think it's just all 1%?
No, that's all the 1%. Because that's coming straight to us from the state.
Okay.
Right.
So we know that's part of the 1%.
Are we required to segregate that money in the bank? Or is it just going to general dividends?
It's required to be in a separate account.
Yeah, that's the question.
But it doesn't have to be a separate bank account. So it's a separate account on our general ledger.
Right, okay.
But it's not a separate bank.
There's no requirement to segregate funds. Okay. Well, I got. Any other questions? Thank you, Gary. All right, next we'll hear from Assistant Director of Operations, Brandy Walter.
The first thing I have is the monthly economic development report.
Any questions? Do we have a date for the Mexican restaurant that's going to be open? Have you heard?
I have not heard a date yet on that.
I saw something this weekend that said July, I believe, is the date. There she informed.
Yeah, I assume everything, construction's moving fine on the Deerfield vineyard, that door back up speed and they're moving toward the goals.
As far as I'm aware.
Funny you brought that up. We have an owner here who would like to say something. Sure. You'd like to come forward, Bob. Please come on, to the podium.
You upped that up on purpose.
No, I'm just saying, I think it's, he looks familiar. State the name in person if you would.
My name is Bob Trudkin. I've been before you guys before. So we had a couple setbacks, obviously. But things are moving pretty fast now. HVAC is in. The walls, the exterior walls are about half done. They, contractor said he'll be done by Thursday with all the walls. Charter Spectrum is coming in Friday. ADT is coming in Friday to run all the pre-wiring. Kind of stayed on top of all the contractors. I have a great bunch of contractors. They're all local except for one. And they have been bent over backwards. As soon as they got the green light, they said, how fast can we come in? So it's really been great. One thing I really want, though, is I want to thank Eric and the board and Kerry for moving this thing along and getting this thing going. So with a couple of setbacks we had, we were able to get going. City has been bent over backwards. I have never had a problem with the city. They've always helped me along. It's just a few outside parties that have had stumbling blocks. But that's all right. We get through it. My anticipated opening, originally when I came to you before, was before May. Well, it's probably going to be June now because of a couple of these setbacks. But that's all right. We'll get going and we'll be, still be there. So I really appreciate all your support. Kerry, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
I couldn't have done it without your department, Jack, because Michelle, they've done really great for me, so.
I think we could also say thank you to you for being understanding and not coming in and huffing and puffing, but just saying, how can I move this along? Tell me and I'll do what I need to do. I appreciate that.
And I'm willing to, as we start building downtown, I'm willing to help out in any way. Because I'm a true believer in rebuilding downtown. So if I can be of any help in any way, there's a job to me in.
We all have your number.
Yes. It'll be you for sure. She has her number on speed dial, not for that. She wants to order.
Oh, that's right.
I'm bottling cherry as we speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for the compliment. Can I?
Thank you so much.
Fall with a lead up question. Do we, has the team sat down and looked at how the process went for the developer to see if there is where we can make improvements or changes? You know, because some of the issues were outside what the city could do. Because maybe we need to have that conversation to figure that out. Or maybe have control it better or be aware of the bumps there somehow. Because, you know, I think the idea was each step is to improve what we're doing, get better and better and better. And so when you run into bumps or situations, then you've got to ask yourself what additionally we can do or how we address the situation. So I think that's important, that the city team sit down and do that. And if the board needs to take some motion or some action, then you need to tell us that. Well, and I think that's where we're at. From our conversation, I think legally, we're looking into the legal things we can do to change some of that, which obviously maybe we'll have a workshop to discuss a little later, once we get a little further into it. But it's not just being what it is. We are actually working on what we can do. I know we've had conversations, Terry and I have, about how to maybe positively change it to, well, just say it the way it is. So the city didn't take some of the things on the chin that we don't need to be taking on the chin.
Yeah, I think where my greatest concern is honestly is as we look to developing downtown, some of the current code requirements are going to be, as we've discovered, are going to be very difficult in trying to renovate some of the older buildings downtown. So So I think the board's gonna have to make some decisions about what our desires are and what we're willing to accept, so that we can then try to find a way to accommodate that in our code. That's one area. We've looked at our staff and talked about changing the requirements that they have, and making sure that the businesses that we're working with understand this liaison and what their purpose is, and that, you know, they're really there to help them through the bumps. So I think it's a little bit of a learning experience, and I think we will improve as we go along and identify things that are barriers, with the realization that there's always going to be some number of things that are beyond our control. And, but being able to make sure that we're communicating those with the businesses we're working with, and trying to help them through that process, even though we don't control that process.
Yeah, and I, because I think we talked at the planning meeting about downtown specifically, is how the city could invest, or do stuff to encourage development, to even be more actively participating in development downtown, because if that's our focus of what we wanna do, we need to step to the plate, recognizing this is a specific goal that we're trying to accomplish.
Yeah, and the truth is, we have not started working on that. My plate's been a little full, so we really haven't been able to bite off a new challenge. But within the next couple of months, we should be able to start working on that, and really trying to get some idea of how we can move that along.
Well, Terry, do you think we should, in maybe in a couple of months, schedule another work session like we had in January, which I thought was very productive, and we certainly have made, we have made a lot of progress since then, and we've had, Bob's experienced it now, I mean, we're better now, I believe it, Bob, than we were a year ago.
Oh, I understand that.
And we continue to, wanna continue to be better as these things come up, and what we're gonna have to make adjustments to, there's a lot of things that we're not aware of, but until they're brought to our attention, we can't change them until they're brought to our attention, even though you, the business owner suffers a little bit, and again, I really appreciate your patience for hanging in there.
So, a question I have is, is the city trying to promote mom and pop or box stores? And the reason I say that is, if you're, if the city's trying to promote mom and pop, like me, you get entrepreneurs coming in that give a flavor to downtown that you need to outside of box stores, then I guess what I'm getting at is, if I would've, I don't like, mom and pops like me don't like surprises. And so if you know everything upfront, then you can budget for it, because mom and pops like me have a budget. We're not box stores that, we've got millions of dollars to spend, and so if we know a lot of that stuff upfront, then we can allow for it. We don't like surprises.
That's exactly what I'm, that's exactly what I'm just wondering about.
So the people watching this or listening to this in the morning may not have heard everything you had to say, because you weren't up here, so I'm surprised we weren't getting the big wave down in the back. But I think for, for what we're looking to do downtown is different than what we're looking to do on the highway, so when we're looking at the downtown renovation, that needs to be part of our discussion and, and the whole implementation. I mean, there needs to be a whole group of people together to implement what we need downtown. So that is your mom and pop district. I don't think your mom and pop district's going to do so well out in the bigger areas. But that's what we want, I mean, that's, then when we did our planning, that's, you know, even the strategic plan from last year or the year before, that is this district, so.
And that's what makes downtown unique.
Right, right.
I think we recognize in the conversation, that if you're dealing with a large company, a box store, who's done this over and over, they have the resources, they have the lawyers, they have the accountants and all that, they have the experience, but you as an entrepreneur coming in, it's also a learning curve for you, and we need to put more resources and more attention to what you're doing as an entrepreneur, because you don't have the deep pockets, you don't have the expertise that you can call up, and so I think that's where the city views, is we need to continually work to play a bigger role in helping your type of operation get over those humps and those hurdles, so there's, it's a better experience than what it is.
So stay tuned, because now that we've got some of the stuff done that we needed done out west, I think now is when you'll start seeing more of that focus.
And as you and I have had conversations, there were some things recognized that we do need to definitely change, and we're working on it as, as we speak.
That's, that's part of the learning curve.
It is, but we'll get there.
Sometimes painful, but that's all right.
We're on the road.
And I don't like being the guinea pig on some of that.
We're traveling down that path.
That's why we appreciate your patience. That was just a nicer way of saying it.
Thank you, Gary.
Part of the, part of the issue, I think, the city needs to market downtown to potential mom and pop businesses.
We need to get...
I'm sure there's a method of doing that.
We need to get this structure as to what our codes are going to be, what our initiatives are going to be, and then once we have that all in a packet, then the marketing starts, so.
But I think we can take this issue that, with this gentleman and his, if we go back to the beginning of timeline, first contact, what took place, how long did it take, where did it go from there, where did it go from there, where was the big delay, why? We need to get those answers in a timeline, so we'll know who dropped the ball, or who's not doing what they need to do, and if it's one of the outside people that we deal with, maybe we need to change them.
That's where we're at right now, we're just gonna kind of look where we're at, we can leave it. There again, well, I'm sure we'll work some soon to be able to discuss that a little more.
Yes, we will. I don't know, they already shut us down.
I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah.
We're not even done yet.
Well, I think there's, there's an old biblical scripture that says a clean barn doesn't produce income. I think we all know what that means, and as we do these type of projects, there's gonna be stuff on the floor that we gotta clean up, and I think that's the truth of that saying.
Wow.
Well, plug your...
That's one of my favorite things.
Okay. On that note...
Let's go ahead and move on to the month we have in the report.
Terry, the second one is the admin report from April.
So everybody knows, I always talk about this, and I will until I don't anymore. We did really good in the last few years of bringing down our experience mud, which lowers our cost of our work comp insurance. What? Yeah, I'm on the monthly report, am I on the right one, right, or on the monthly report? Yeah, I'm talking safety, and we really, you know, we've done very well, the public works department has done fabulous. Building for what they do, I would say they've done a great job, but we really now need to pick up the grounds and maintenance, and the police department had, the police had no training noted on here.
Yes, but they did send it to me, I just got it.
I'm sure they did, my, so that's what I was gonna say, I'm sure that's not a true empty statement. But we still need to keep that in the forefront of everybody's mind, of how important that is, because that is easy money to the city, to try to remind people of safety.
The building department, they do a great job, they come up with new topics all the time, he does a great job with that.
Ground maintenance, this is their key time.
Right.
You know, especially with new employees coming on this summer, I mean, that has to be, you know, if not a daily thing, it has to be at least a week or two, like, two times a week, so. Okay, that's all I'm gonna say.
Public Works.
I know.
Public Works knocked it out of park.
I know, thank you.
I also wanted to let you know, I hope you guys have had a chance to go look at the new website, that's up in the morning.
Yeah, dude, I like that.
That was gonna be my comment, I forgot to talk on, the website is fabulous. I think there's just normally said, it's easy to negotiate, it's easy to find, I like the search box, you type in what you're looking for, it's really, whoever was involved in that really needs to be applauded.
Drop downs were easy to follow, I mean, it was, it was very simple to get around.
And if they figured it out, the public's gonna be great.
I will fully admit that she's correct.
I think I can navigate okay.
It was these two I was talking about?
The only comment that I had really, you know, when you look at the website, it talks about the public, what does it say, the public department, or the, what is, what is grounds, maintenance, and streets?
Public Works?
Public Works. I wonder if that needs to be changed to say public services? The people, when they go there, they're looking for a service, because I don't, do most people know what public works really means?
I think so.
You think so? Okay. Because to me, I was thinking, well, what we're doing, public works, we're providing services, and if I was gonna look to fill a pothole or do that, what I think to go to public works or public services, that's my...
Really what you should do is go to the I want to bar, and it drops down, and then say, report a pothole.
Right, no, that's great.
Easiest place to go, I want to.
I want to. Sounds like we need a newspaper story on the great website we now have.
That would be a great...
Hey, that is a good idea.
I want to.
Wow.
Send me a press release.
Press release.
All right, what's the last, last piece of you?
The other thing that I have on there is, we got the Corps of Engineer permit, so the rough grading start out at the park, hopefully we'll release them.
Temporal stoppage.
Temporal stoppage.
Awesome.
Good, can't wait.
Awesome.
The last thing I have for you tonight is the health insurance waiver reimbursements. We reimburse half of our insurance to folks that waive their insurance for the year. That total for this year is twenty-two thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty cents.
Questions, comments? Entertain a motion to approve the health insurance waiver payments in the amount of twenty-two thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty cents.
So moved.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Alder Person Casterly, signed by Alderman Schultz, roll call vote please.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alder Person Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Motion K six zero. Anything else, Terry? All right. All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the regular Board of Altona Meeting and go into executive session for personal and real estate issues. So moved.
Second.
One made by Alderman Schultz, signed by Alderman John Miller, roll call vote.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alder Person Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Six zero, and we are so adjourned, thank you, folks.